Hopefully it'll be a constructive evening. And I think it's a good idea when the community can come together to solve the problems, and trying to be civil at the same time. Debbie is going to be reading a list of do's and don'ts. They're not commands, obviously, but they're just basically the guidelines for the program. So Debbie, could you please do that? We apologize for the microphone, but...
Is this working?
I think so.
Can you hear it? No?
I think it's working.
Okay, well, let me know if you can't hear me. There it's working. I wasn't speaking loud enough. Okay, well, what we're hoping is that as your name is called from the sign-up sheet, that you'll come up here and stand and ask your questions. And then, of course, you can ask them for the four supervisors. The moderator for tonight's meeting will be the Board of Supervisor of the district where this meeting is being held. The moderator will be responsible for ensuring the following guidelines are met. And each supervisor will address questions as asked by the attendees or as they deem appropriate. The amount of time determined to engage individually with the board will be based on the 1.5 hours allotted for this meeting and the number of speakers. So our goal is to hopefully give each person at least five minutes to engage in a conversation with the board. So when your name is called, please provide your district prior to discussing the item that you wish to talk about. And during your time to speak, you can ask general questions to the entire board, or you can ask a specific supervisor. Please address your questions and comments accordingly. Address your comments and questions directly to the board, not to others in the room. Once we've gone through every individual that has signed the sheet, we'll allow for a second round of questions, if time permits. Please note that we can't have any discussion regarding the pending lawsuit of Marion Brad versus the Board of Supervisors. This is intended to be an informal, casual conversation regarding questions or concerns you may ask. Failure to treat each and every one with dignity and respect will result in you being asked to leave the forum. The attendance and success of tonight's meeting will determine how often and where future community outreach meetings are held. So tonight, we have our supervisors in front of us. John Lozinski is from the Hampton District, and that's where we are tonight, so he'll be our moderator. Roger Welch is our chairman from the Wakefield District. Mike Binick is from the Piedmont District. Ron Frazier is from the Jackson District. And Vice Chair Chris Parish from Stonewall Hawthorne District is absent. So with that, again, come up, ask your questions. You'll have five minutes to engage in conversation and ask questions. And we'll have a timer and let you know when that is out. We ask that you conclude fairly quickly after that, so that we can move on to the next individual and maybe have time for some of you that have additional comments at the end. Any questions?
Debbie, where did you sign up?
I have it on my chair. You want me to sign it up, Patty?
Please, thank you.
Okay. And we'll take them in the order of those that have signed up already. There were a few that hit me up a little early, so we have those in order, and then we'll add those tonight. So again, come up here and ask your questions.
Okay, and I guess, as moderator, I don't think I have too much of a role here, unless there's a referee required, and I hope that's not the case. So we have first, I'd like to ask a question.
The first one is Paige Blenick.
Do I need the microphone?
Yeah, you should.
All right. First, I want to say thank you for having this session. I think this is a great idea where we can discuss things directly with each other, not the normal format of the Board of Supervisors, which is not good to construct into a conversation. I have a couple of issues on county financing. One, to pay for the county attorney pay raise, you cut social services legal support, Melissa Cup, I believe is the person who does that, from $33,000 to $18,000. Meanwhile, the budget projected a 445 increase in foster care, 76 percent increase in mandated children, and 53.8 percent increase in welfare administration. And now we need another 200K for social services. I was wondering, what is causing such a large increase in these accounts? And is the reduction in legal support contributing to the problem? Anybody?
Do you need to answer it?
Sure, Debbie.
Community, I mean, social services is something that we don't actually control. They send us the bill each year, and that's what we have to pay. I don't know where it comes from. We don't know what the money is used for. But childcare is probably the biggest expense there is.
Well, I can tell you what the money is used for in regards to the Department of Social Services. We own a bed at one of the detention centers, so we pay for that bed if we have a young juvenile who's in the JMDR court, who is going to be placed into detention. So some of those monies go to that bed.
It's a large amount. Well, I'm just wondering why it's going up so...
I'd like to answer that, too, if you don't mind. One of the things that we did is that we, because we put in the radio system, we had our tax and expenditures, and the social services is mandated. And so what we're doing is not necessarily increasing to that amount, but we need to be ready should we have that expense.
Can everyone hear that in the background?
No.
Okay. You're going to get up, or you're going to talk down that way.
I know, I talk low. So, as you know, we put in our next advertisement that we were increasing social services by $200,000. That doesn't mean that we're going to spend it. It means that we need to prepare for it. We spent money on the radio system, so we've reached the max that we can have in expenditures this year without advertising. So it doesn't mean, again, that we're going to spend it, but it is mandated. So if social services needs it, we need to be prepared. And we don't want to have to run two and three and four ads this year at $400 apiece. So we're putting that money in the budget so that we're prepared for down the line if it's needed.
And I know the Board, Paige and the Board at the last meeting asked the Department of Social Services to come and make a presentation to us, so that we could have asked those kinds of questions and drill down a little bit more on, you know, why they think they may need, if that's in fact what they're asking for, another $200,000. I know, I think in the past, a lot of that has been foster care.
Do I have time for a quick second question?
Yes.
Okay. In regards to the supplemental appropriation for the Legal Defense Fund, I want to say that I support having funds available for county employees, you know, for legal support. I even support providing that support upfront. However, if the employee loses the case, I believe the employee must refund the county all the legal expenses incurred. If the county, if the employee appeals the court's decision, then the employee must not receive legal support for the county. Otherwise, there is no incentive for employees to know and obey the law, and the legal counsel is incentivized to prolong the case. It is totally inappropriate for the taxpayers to provide county employees with legal defense funds when they have broken the law. I believe the public is more than willing to give the employees the benefit of the doubt, but once a court has ruled against them, the taxpayers cannot be held responsible or accountable. Gentlemen, for those of you caught in this case, and I'm not talking about the case, all right, I request that tonight, you each state for the record that if you lose the case, you will refund the county the legal expenses paid by the county.
Well, I won't, no, I wouldn't do that. I wouldn't ask anybody else that wanted either run for office or be appointed to a board to roll the dice, play roulette, whatever analogy you wanted to use, you know, unless it was, unless it was something along the lines of willful or gross negligence. If it meets that threshold, or if it's fraud, or if it's something along those lines, maybe there's a reason for a conversation. But just to carte blanche say, oh, I'll absolutely positively refund, recharge the Legal Defense Fund, I don't, I don't think that's wise. Not necessarily thinking about the people that are up here in front of the room with everybody, but anybody that sits on a board or runs for elected office. I just think that's, you know, that, that, that's, they shouldn't have that hanging over their head.
No, I'm only saying if they lose the court case.
If it's, my personal opinion is if it's, if it meets the threshold of like a gross negligence, or, and I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not sure these are the right terms, willful misconduct, or fraud, then maybe you can have the conversation. But not just a, not just a blanket statement to say, yeah, if I lose, I'll recharge them. So that's, that's my personal, that's my personal opinion. You asked me for my opinion.
That's what it is.
Who would make that determination?
I don't know. I don't know, Ron. I'm not sure if that's a determination that the Board would make. I don't think it's, I mean, I know, I guess the Court of Law could decide whether or not it was gross negligence. But as far as whether or not there's a policy that, you know, recharges that Defense Fund, I suppose, I suppose that would be on us, and I would support it.
I happen to agree with Mr. Blenick. I didn't know this question was coming, but I happen to agree with it. I voted against even running that for public, public hearing. I don't like these things. I happen to agree with Mr. Blenick. I didn't know he was going to ask this question, but I do, I do agree with it. I've lived here 34 years full-time, came back to this county time and time again to visit relatives before that. This is the first time in my knowledge that the county has ever tried to create such a fund as this. I mean, I heard something ludicrous at one of the meetings that, well, what if somebody, you know, we won't be able to get people to apply and be appointed to something like the Library Board because they're afraid of being sued? We've got sovereign immunity. If we do our job properly, we can't be held accountable for a lawsuit if we do our job properly. What this fund is, is basically to support people that don't do their jobs properly. That's what it's going to be used for. It's never, we've never had anything like that before. Why would we need it now? And that's, that's where my point is.
My time, my time is up. Can we get the other one?
Sure.
That's my opinion.
I don't support it either. You know, we rely on our legal attorneys to keep us informed on different matters. Unless it was, like John said, gross negligence or theft, I, I just can't, I think it would hinder many people wanting to run for the Board, or even be appointed to any of the commissions.
I'm going to agree with John and Mike, because obvious the factor of running for public office and not being accused of any criminal activity or gross negligence, I guess I wouldn't understand that. I wouldn't understand it.
Thanks, Paige.
I read about an incident up in Pennsylvania where, I think it was a large hog farm wanted to come into the county. And when the county turned it down, the corporation that was trying to put in this large corporate hog farm, which would potentially pollute the water, pollute the air, degrade the property value, those members on that county, I'll call it a county board, I don't really know what it is in Pennsylvania, but they were individually sued by this corporation. And, you know, it's for millions of dollars. And that's a scary thing. And to tell you the truth, when I read that, and it was before I ran for the Board, I said, you know, who would ever want to do that job if they were to face that kind of attack without sufficient support from the people of your county and, you know, your lawyers? And most of us don't earn that kind of money to afford that kind of payments to a law firm that would protect us. So, you know, I think it's something that the county needs, just to, not that I ever want to see it happen, but there are predatory type things out there that, you know, if somebody wanted to come in and, you know, put something here that we didn't want, and then they would sue the Board or the Planning Commission or whatever. Thank you.
Debbie, you have the next question?
Next person is Dave Conick.
I yield my time till the end, if there's time.
Is that okay with the moderator?
If there's time, sure. Who's next?
Damaris Miller.
Folks, if you want to speak, you can sign up in front here. That's the way we're doing it. Please come forward and sign up. We're doing this, taking this in the order of the people that signed up. Damaris, sorry.
There seems to be an issue with the audio, so I'll try to speak up. I want to thank the Board for having this meeting. I think that this is something that should become a regular event, perhaps on a quarterly basis, because I do think you need to hear from the community, and this is a really good forum for doing that. I just have a very brief comment, and it is more concerned than it is a question. I am concerned about the, I'm not a, I'm not a lawyer. I'm a head doctor. I'm not a lawyer. But I, I am concerned about combining the position of county attorney with the position of zoning administrator, because I can see down the road, there might be times when the county attorney might need to defend the county against decisions made or actions taken by the zoning administrator. And if this county attorney is both positions, how in the world is that going to work? I can see other potential problems, too, but I'm just very concerned that the county attorney should not be taking on the zoning administration, which is really a very ticklish issue in this county anyway. Thank you for having this forum, and I do hope it'll happen again. I apologize, I'm going to leave, because I've got out-of-town guests that have just arrived.
Damaris, before you leave, I think we can put your mind at ease. We've, you know, we've made a deter, we've agreed, we've made the determination that we don't think it's a good model to combine the county attorney with the zoning administrator position. I think Chris would, wouldn't mind if I said it. He was, he was predisposed initially to think that that might be a good model. After consulting with all of us, he agreed that that, for the reasons you articulated and a couple of more, that that wasn't, because of potential conflicts, that that wasn't necessarily wise.
Thank you. That's a comfort.
Did I hit that right?
Did I hit that?
Yes.
Okay. Next question, Debbie. Thank you, Damaris.
Thank you. Marion Brad.
Get some exercise.
Thank you. So for several months, and John and I talked about this, I've been trying to better understand the County Employee Health Benefits Plan. And I know in years past, county school employees had their own plan separate from that of the rest of the county employees. And I'm just wondering, is that still true? And if so, why?
If they have the same, repeat that again.
If the county school employees and the county employees in general, like at the sheriff's office, if they all share the same health benefit plan, or if they're two separate plans? And if so, why?
Debbie, can you start us off on that one? Thank you, Marion.
Since I've been here, we've, we've looked at that, and we are all part of the state government plan, so while their plan may be just a little bit different than ours, there really isn't any advantages to consolidating because we're all part of the state plan. So they're very similar, and there isn't a way to really go out and market that. Even, I talked to them about combining it, and there's no cost savings. Because we are small plans, it's very hard to get good benefits. So we consolidate them and aggregate them all into one plan, so we get the benefit of a larger plan, but yet having our smaller plans.
So does it cost more?
No, it doesn't cost more.
To the employee?
The costs are based on the Board's decision, so our Board would base our, the employee cost here, and then the school Board...
So they could be different?
They could be different, right? But that would be a Board decision.
And the school Board makes its own decision, like, Larry, you're here on the school Board, and Lynn, you're here on the school Board. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I didn't know if you wanted to comment on that at all. You're on the spot. Yeah, we do our own plan. It's within our budgeting process.
All right. Well, thank you for clearing that up.
Debbie, who's next?
Cynthia Price. Cynthia Price.
She's here.
There's one thing I hate, it's coming up here, the microphone. I missed the last half of the last Board of Supervisors meeting, and apparently Mr. Goff, is that the pronunciation?
Goff, yes.
Was put in as deputy or assistant to Peter Luke. And it wasn't in the agenda, so it surprised me when I found that out. So I have four questions. What happened to the remaining six candidates that had not yet been interviewed, or have they all been interviewed? Who will serve as Commonwealth Attorney? Does this mean Mr. Goff will replace Peter Luke? And if so, who then will become Commonwealth Attorney? And I brought up something at least four times, including with my supervisor, that was important to me personally, and that was that the new attorney should be knowledgeable of the issues of health and environment, along with wireless technology. It is an issue. He should be knowledgeable of it and open-minded, because if he knows nothing about it, it's almost like he ends up representing the technology companies rather than the public. So to me, that was very important. So my question is, do you know anything about Mr. Goff on that respect? Or did you just dismiss what I brought up and not even consider it? So those are my questions.
Mr. Goff remains the Commonwealth Attorney. That's an elected position. So the way the vote went down, I'm sorry, the, Mr. Goff will remain the Commonwealth Attorney. That's his elected position. The Deputy County Attorney position that he was offered, and if he wishes to remain at the first of the year, he would be the county attorney.
So would they be combined?
It's a combined position. I was told, well, not just I, the Board was told back when Mr. Luke was holding those positions, that he was grandfathered in that, and then all of a sudden, apparently, that it's no longer the case, or maybe it wasn't the case, but we still need, I guess, an opinion on that. And I do not know his expertise on wireless communications.
Well, since I brought it up over and over, and I stood up and testified about it, and I even talked to Chris Parish personally, how could you automatically put him in and line him up and not even know any of this about him, unless you ignored my comments? See, I think that's important, because we've had a struggle with this technology, and part of the struggle was the county attorney would let them do anything. You know, he'd say, oh, no, they'll sue, they'll do this, they'll do that. And so this was an important issue to me.
I'm not valgrating the importance of the issue, but there's, really, he is correct, there's not a whole lot that the localities can do.
Well, other localities are doing things, so...
They state, our citing or approval of the citing of a cell tower has to be on, basically, aesthetics, and it can't really be on the technology, whether it's dangerous or not. That shouldn't...
Unless we have something like fiber, which gives everybody good phone, good internet, good television in the county.
But we're, we're not opposed to that coming in, but there's not much of a way that we can force them and bring them in.
Well, and I think, I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that this broadband committee will take a look at all technologies. I mean, we're, I mean, Cynthia, you know, you know very well, the Board is very familiar with your positions on this. And so, you know, the broadband committee will take a look at, take a look at all of it. With respect to your county attorney question, I think the only one that may not have been answered is, yes, we did interview multiple candidates for the position. Debbie, next question?
At my understanding, in the broadband committee, we're looking for people that are both in favor of broadband and people that are not so favorable about them, so we'll get a...
I'm not, no, I'm not opposed to broadband. I just think we have some choices. And if we don't take them, we're, it's going to be made for us, and it's going to be made by other companies, and, you know, and we have a lot to protect in this county. Going Culpeper, you see the difference. I went to the Culpeper hearing on the cell tower we're putting up at Boston. Not a single member of the audience knew anything, anything about any health issues with the technology. And when you look at Culpeper, it kind of explains why they voted the way they voted. I mean, it's everywhere. You know, we're not getting it from the mainstream press. You have to research it on the Internet, and it is there. Just put in "cell tower dangers," do some research.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person is Pat Lohler.
Could, could I, I mean, serve saying something later toward the end? Because I want to hear a couple of things, because I had two questions.
Sure, that's fine. We can come back around. I already did that for one person.
Phil Irwin.
And if you haven't signed up yet and you would like to speak, I think Debbie has the list up here.
Let's see if we can use this. My topic will be growth. I came to Rappahannock County after 12 different weekends of driving radiuses away from Washington, DC, 56 years ago. And I discovered Rappahannock County and thought that it might be the last place to develop. And sure enough, it has been the last place to develop. The surrounding counties that we have are good examples of where they had a railroad, difficult waterway, major highway. And so right now, they have growth that is dedicated, they're consigned to growth, there's no, no way around it. And in our capitalistic system in this country, growth is inevitable. Rappahannock County is going to grow, but it's a question of how it's going to grow. You have had predecessors in your offices that have been responsible for the fact that we had someplace to respect and protect. That is the reason why, excuse me, the Rappahannock League for Environmental Protection, back in 1971, invited a landscape architect by the name of Mead Palmer from the University of Virginia to address the topic of comprehensive planning. This was long before comprehensive planning was required for all communities in this area. And our plan has served us very, very well. I don't know how many people here have actually read the plans, but there's very little in it with which you could disagree. It is responsible for keeping this county the way most of us found it, the way most of us would like to leave it for our future generations, and the way the people who were born here stay here. And it's up to you, gentlemen, to make sure that we continue to grow in a responsible fashion. A lot of people are buying land in Rappahannock County and mismanaging it, or not at all, actually. Land should be managed for conservation in the future, for wildlife, for all kinds of mutual benefits. And I suggest that the Comprehensive Plan, Article Six, especially with the goals and objectives, continue to provide the place to live that we all came here for and stay here for. Thank you.
Phil, you have it. I wonder if you had a question? That was good. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Jason Pickett.
So I have a question for all of you regarding the billing ordinance that were instituted for cost recovery initially. It's been no secret to all of you that it was a large issue when you returned $38,000 and some change of Amosville's money citing Medicare fraud as an alleged reason, although it was a county billing vendor and a county representative that was handling the account that caused that to begin with. Nevertheless, you guys failed to change the ordinance despite our mutual request numerous times. But yet now, you're, because three other companies want to go out and keep doing it instead of doing it dependent like everybody else was forced out to do, why is that happening so quickly? But yet, over a year, each and every one of you failed to make sure the county attorney did his job and revised the ordinance as you guys all alleged that you wanted done. Each and every one of you let it sit on the table for over a year, despite our numerous attempts in begging you to change the ordinance to allow us to be in legal compliance, and each and every one of you failed to do that.
Well, being the, being the new guy here and trying to pick up where the conversation started at the beginning of the year, my... started at the beginning of the year, my understanding was, this was, this was going to be part, part, I think the discussion was part of the fire and rescue services agreement. Let me back up half a step. We got advice from the county attorney that if we didn't return the money to the insurance company, that we would potentially open ourselves up to enact a, an accusation and possible commitment of fraud, Medicare, Medicaid fraud, Medicare fraud. It was under the advice of the county attorney that we made that determination. Because we rely on the county attorney to give us the guidance and read the law as he best sees, he or she best sees fit. So I was inclined to follow the legal advice of the county attorney, whose recommendation was to, to return the money. I didn't, it didn't take that vote lightly. I understand $33,000 or $38,000, if that's what the number was, is a, is a lot of money. But it was more money, it would be potentially more liability or more money to the county if, in fact, we were called on the carpet for not billing that properly, I guess, which is what the county attorney was, was saying. So it was the, I, I voted that way because I had to take into account all of the taxpayers and how much money they would have to pay if, in fact, Medicare did come after us and say, you know, that company wasn't allowed, wasn't allowed to do that. And that was the advice we got, and that was, that was the, that was the advice that I followed.
That, that's not my question. I understand the logistics behind that and the reason, however flawed that may be. That's not my interpretation. The question is, why did you allow the billing ordinance to remain incorrect despite, was it exposed as being incorrect and incorrectly done? By your own admissions, by having to return the money with the way the cost recovery system was being run, you still didn't change it. It's still incorrect as of today, unless you guys approved, redid it in the last month or so. In the current one...
Well, there are...
Can I, can I answer them?
I'd like to continue to hear from him, please.
If, if I could.
Yes.
The problem is that the county attorney's been able to work on whatever he wants to, whenever he wanted to, with no supervision.
So my question is, who runs the county? You, her, or the county attorney? You guys should be able to set the agenda correct.
Well, I've been trying to figure that out.
Well, when the company, when the company, when the company in question didn't like the answer, or what, didn't like what the board did, they put into effect the ability to go out and do EMS cost recovery on their own.
Because there was no legal option to maintain compliance with the way you were setting it up. And would it be interesting, you know, that you're not currently following your own ordinance that says you will bill every single patient a set fee? So the county itself is in violation of your very own ordinance that you use to return Amosville's money.
Well, we have three companies that are now under the county, is that not correct? That are doing EMS cost recovery through the county by their own, by their own selection.
And I challenge you to find a single patient that follows your ordinance. You won't find one, because there's not, in your ordinance, you mandate that you require a set fee to be charged to every patient that's run. You're not charging that to anybody.
Well, now you are in the weeds beyond my expertise. So Debbie, do you have, I mean, do you have a...
I was concerned months ago, we just don't enforce our own ordinance.
I mean, I'm gonna, I'd like the county attorney or county administrator to be able to respond.
I guess the one thing I'd like to add to that is that there was a document that was submitted to Culpeper to look at, and actually, there's been a second document to Culpeper to look at. The first one was to change the ordinance, and then the second one was a mutual aid agreement. And they have gone through a new county administrator and a new attorney. So we have not heard back from either one of them regarding that. So we can change our, our own ordinance, and that's why the three that are reporting to the county were done. But unfortunately, we are waiting to hear from Culpeper for any feedback from them. So we continue to call them every couple of months, but they're going through some turmoil.
I guess my logic is still, why is, Rappahannock County is dependent on Culpeper's opinion or mutual aid agreement? You guys are giving an option, a billing ordinance isn't even required by state law. So you guys are continuing to not do what you say you're going to do. You all sit here and said yourself that it needs to be changed, but nobody's willing to do the work to change it.
Sounds like we're doing the work to change it.
I would disagree, sir.
Actually, that work that they're going to change it has happened after one year has transpired, that they knew that we couldn't build properly the ordinance. And the one that's scheduled for November for the three companies has the same exact language in it. We won't be able to bill, they won't be able to bill for calls generated or transports that initiate outside this county without a mutual aid agreement or some other agreement with those counties. And we don't have those. So if we adopt that measure that Mr. Luke has written up at the November meeting, after the public hearing, then Chester Gap and Castleton, where the primary ones will be affected by it, they won't be able to bill for any transports in another county. Because we don't have this stuff in place because of the language of the ordinance. We just keep doing it. And nobody seems to understand that. You can't do one without the other at the same time, because if you do one, you have to wait for the other. Or you just have the language in there. Take the language out, period. But we just keep doing this. But it took a year for Mr. Luke to write that change. August of 2015, we met over in the building office with Mr. Burke, Ms. Kaiser, Mr. Luke, and members of Amosville. And that's when we finally heard for the first time that our ordinance, our own ordinance, kept this county from, from billing those calls, on their behalf with Culpeper. And then a year goes by, one year goes by, before Mr. Luke even attempts to write something different. And they're, they're not really interested in working over there on something that we seem to have messed up on our own. That's one problem. Now, number two is, the $38,000 was returned because Mr. Luke, and nobody challenged him, that it could be Medicare fraud. But the money was returned, and it incrementally went up to about $42,000, I think, by now. And we have no guarantee, at least I haven't seen anything, that those companies, whether it was Medicaid or Anthem or whoever, received those monies. I think they sent something, Ms. Kaiser gave it to Amosville, but I don't know exactly that it, that it, the money actually went back. But what it probably did was raise red flags with everybody that was looking at it, if they did get the money back, they're saying, what went on? And here we, we are, we have one of our employees, if they didn't initiate this, they at least sat there and watched it happen when we, when the money was billed improperly. And then we took the money from Amosville. That money should have went to Amosville. If anybody took a hit, it should have been this board, from, from some other line item. But no, we didn't do that. Now we're, now we're just continuing down this path of having the county attorney write something that doesn't make a bit of sense to anybody that sits down and reads the ordinance.
Well, I never heard anybody say that, put forward the idea that this board should take the hit or take the $33,000 or the $38,000 out of...
It's not Amosville's fault.
I didn't say it was that. I didn't, I didn't say that. I said, there wasn't anybody that, that put that forward.
I'm saying it, I'm saying it now, and I said it, I said it some time back. The county should have took a hit, not one independent company. It's not their fault. And it's happened again since then. Our contractor somehow did it again with another call. And it's not their fault. They got, they, they, they made the run, but they got to take that money. And again, who, who's supposed to run the county? Just this past Board of Supervisors meeting, we had two items show up on the agenda that I had no prior knowledge about. They were...
Well, now you're, now we're getting into another area.
Well, I'm just showing you, to, to strengthen his point, we had two, two decisions that should have been this board's policy decisions to make before they went on the agenda for publication. And yet, there they show up, and this board seemed to have no idea how they got there.
I think we're, I think we're, we're talking about...
We're talking about this board, I'm talking about this board not doing its job. That's what I'm talking about. And that's why he asked the question. Why did we allow it to happen?
We allowed it to happen because we were given the advice, the legal advice, which I know you disagree with.
We don't have to do everything somebody tells us to do.
I know we don't, but the attorney's good money to give us what we think to be solid advice. And if we don't think it's solid advice, we, you know, we can vote otherwise, or, or...
But this board hasn't done it.
Next question.
Yeah, we're attacking someone that's not here.
Not attacking them.
Debbie, who do we have?
We're the ones responsible for it.
Next question.
Well, you guys have set up my next group of questions for you. I have four. And Mr. Reneki, thank you for being here and coming out and enjoying this evening here. The first question I have does directly go into what Mr. Frazier had said. Several of us go on the board docs and see what the agenda is, and based on those topics, if they affect us or don't affect us, either sit out the meeting or, or make a list of questions to be presented during public comment. So that's my first question, is why are we constantly changing the agenda closer to the meetings and having these things added that we don't all get an opportunity to consider right before the meeting?
Stephanie, do you understand that issues and items come up probably days, within a week of when the board meets? And do you think we should kick the can down the road a month and wait to talk about that 45 days later? Or should we go ahead and put that on the agenda for consideration the next time we meet, which may be three or four days away? I would think that people would want to hear us talk about issues as they come up and are relevant to the county, rather than kick it down, kick it down the, down the road for 45 days.
Well, I would like to comment and say that that sort of kind of directed towards me as a personal opinion. But publicly, in the public comment section of our board meetings, when we are sitting there, that theme is repeated constantly with the other citizens that come to that meeting. So I'm just saying, maybe you...
I'm not picking on you, I'm not picking on you personally, it's just that you asked the question. I think, I would ask the same, I would answer the same question to anybody in this room that begs to differ with how we, how we set the agenda and how that agenda item appears on there. It can come from the county administrator, who's got her hand raised now. It may come from the county attorney, because he or she, he feels it's relevant for the board to consider. I, I would like to see that on the agenda. And I think it's always plenty of, he may only give you three or four days instead of a week, but I still think it's plenty of time to formulate questions.
But we have an ordinance that says that we should be following that based on what is already written for the county. So we should follow what our ordinance is if we're going to have one.
So we should wait 40 days before we talk about an issue when it's relevant and pertinent to discuss it now?
Well, I'll give you a perfect example. Debbie sent us out an email to all the fire associations and told us that our particular items were not going to be addressed on the evening's agenda, then added them to the agenda after she had sent that out, saying, you guys don't really need to come to the meeting. So that was sort of a slap in the face to the fire and rescue departments when they didn't think their items were going to be on the agenda, and then they were on the agenda to be discussed.
I'll let her defend herself on that.
So, I don't really need, I'm talking to you guys to let you guys know what we're doing without fire and rescue.
Come on, you want an answer to your question, or do you just want to kind of...
Well, you just seem to be wanting to argue with me, Mr. Lewinsky. So I'm going to move on to my second question. My second question is, why...
Let's get an answer, let's get, hear an answer.
I don't, I'm going on to the second question, thank you.
She has the floor.
So why is the Board of Supervisors unable to control its staff with transparency? The other day, Mr. Luke, who insists on, or, or he is allowed to, depending on how you put it, worked on mutual aid agreements without the representation of those within the county and the departments who are going to be providing the services. So my question is, is why all the parties are not at the table and why these meetings are not done through the association or the board of directors of the association when it affects multiple departments in the county?
I would like to talk a little bit about that. We hire very skilled, professional staff to help us with the county. Debbie probably puts in 60 hours a week. Peter puts in untold hours beyond his part-time, part-time salary. And to ask Rod here to sit in that office 60 hours a week and have the skill to run the county, I don't think so. We can direct them, but we don't, maybe. Because we rely on them to know what best needs to be done. They inform us to, the issues that come forward. You know, I don't look at the, the going on in Richmond, the, the bills and stuff that's coming forward that potentially could affect our county, but Debbie does. I don't know the law, like Peter does, or now Art Goff. And to tell you the truth, if I was to try to figure out all this stuff, you'd be in trouble. Because we've hired professionals that know their job and can do it. And I think we've been pretty hard on them, saying, who's running the county? We've hired these people to help us run the county. And I think it's a shame that we've been criticizing them, questioning their abilities. I, you know, I feel it's very hard.
Well, the question wasn't for you. The question was, when the mutual agreement meeting happened, why weren't all the companies affected by that mutual agreement at that meeting? That was the question. Why were certain companies selected to be there, and then the other companies that were being affected were not included in that discussion?
If you'd like an answer, I think the county administrator has one. I don't have an answer for it.
Do you like an answer?
Absolutely. Because it affects several companies.
It was Mr. Luke's opinion that he felt that he needed to talk to the counties and see what they felt. There was never any intention to exclude the fire companies, they will be included. But sometimes the biggest hurdles are governments, and so he wanted to run the wording by them. He was researching whether there is a mutual aid document out there that is consistent among all the other counties so that we didn't have to duplicate it. So he was doing some homework. There will never be a final decision on the mutual aid agreements without all of our companies reviewing it and having their input.
Okay, so my question goes back to, why aren't those going through the association? And not to individual companies?
They, they will, they'll go the both.
So question number three.
Well, we have a lot of people that are looking to answer questions, ask questions tonight, and I think we've given everybody about five, 10 minutes. How many more questions do you have?
I have two more. The second, the third question has to do with the legal fees. The money's being set aside as $100,000. But every time we go as the departments to ask for workman's comp coverage, we're told that it's not affordable. So where is the money coming from that can cover the legal fees but can't cover workman's comp for volunteers?
It's apples and oranges. The legal fees will come from the taxpayers. Certainly, workman's comp would come from the taxpayers as well. But workman's comp is a, it's, it's a, it's a complicated, it's a complicated formula. Insurance companies are going to ask for different thresholds of competency in order of, of physical capability, time that they respond to calls, or whether they respond to calls, or whether they're not licensed to respond to calls. Insurance companies will look at all of that, it's my understanding, before they determine what level of work, who they're going to cover worth workman's compensation, and what level of workman's compensation they would provide. It's, it's, it's an issue that really needs to be looked at carefully, because it could open the county up to great financial liability if we get it wrong.
Thank you for answering that. My last one, which is very relevant for all of us who've been trying to respond to calls the last few days. There is a huge communications issue going on with the towers, with the low band. We're wanting to know, why can't we get it right? Why can't we provide communication services for the entire county to ensure that the radio communications go out so that we can get our citizens taken care of quickly? There are some bigger issues going on in the surrounding counties, and it's a concern that it's knocking on the door. The CVS, CWS came in to put the tower in in Boston, which I think is a wonderful thing. But what are we doing outside of the board that you guys have put together to study the towers, to take care of our existing infrastructure, to make sure we can get to be 99.99% reliable for our responders?
I mean, we've got the radio, we've got Culpeper, we've got...
Yeah, we just, we just implemented an $800,000 radio system that is supposed to help, and then we have a broadband committee that will help with the cell towers and the paging.
So is it back up and running this evening?
The what?
Our communication system?
Yeah, they're working, they're working.
They're working tonight?
I didn't know. It's working.
Oh, it's...
Motorola had to do some stuff, too.
Yeah, I wouldn't put too much faith in the CWS tower, because it's just a company that puts up a cell tower after they get somebody to agree to put equipment on it. The one that they tried to bring in up here, after a year of negotiation, they still didn't have a service provider. So I, I don't know where they are down in Culpeper.
Thank you, dear.
But maybe if the tower went up, which is... But maybe if the tower went up, which it won't happen soon, they could put broadband on it.
Gary Acho.
I'm trying to be disbriefed. I wasn't sure about this comment until more recently, but sometimes sitting here must feel like fairly thankless, got a job. Citizens of the county, elect you, you're all good people. I know you are dedicated, committed. I can't imagine the number of hours you spend. I know how many hours I spend on town council, it's a lot. I also know that it's a lot easier to take shots at you than it is to actually do your job. So I want to just say thank you, first of all, for your service, all of you. I know you don't always agree on everything. I'd be surprised if any board ever did. I know you all feel deeply about this county and about what's right and about the future. So I just want to thank you for your time, your energy, your dedication and your service. I also want to caution you about exposing yourselves individually and personally to liability. I personally am a recovering attorney. I used to be a lawyer in the Commonwealth of Virginia. More recently, I, for whatever reason, ended up on a town council here in the county. And I have a little recent experience with personal liability, at least the risk. There's no public servant, especially one who largely is a volunteer, who should run for a public office and be personally exposed to having their family, their livelihood, their savings, their retirement, everything else, put at risk simply because in this country, this great land of ours, anybody can sue anybody anytime they want, for any reason they want, so long as they can pay the filing fee. So if an attorney, you may be able to walk into a court like I can and defend myself per se because I'm an idiot and only am. You know, a lawyer who has himself as a client, you know that joke. But most of you, do we have an attorney who's a member of the Board of Supervisors?
I don't think so.
So first of all, you become more dependent upon professional counsel. Second of all, you leave yourselves largely exposed to any lawsuit, public or private, because of your work on behalf of us. So I would hope that you would find ways, either through state insurance plans. The town of Washington had one, but for some very specific reasons, they deemed that they could not cover us in recent litigation. So the town then was forced to hire independent counsel. Our own attorney was, had a conflict of interest potentially, so he could not represent us. So it became somewhat difficult, but we managed, even though it cost the town more than it should have, in my opinion. So I just want to thank you again and I want to caution you, this is not so much a question, but just please take care of yourselves, your health. Work hard for us, but be responsible with yourselves, your families and your own livelihoods and your own, your own lives. So that's all I had to say tonight. If you want to open the Flatwood Refuge Center on Mondays, I would really think that's a great idea. But I'll leave that for another night. Thank you.
Jane Whitfield.
Hi, thanks again, thanks for being here. And I am here just to make a, make you aware of something that's coming up on Wednesday night, a planning commission presentation. There's a group of us here in Rappahannock County who've been talking over the last year or so and meeting over the last couple of months to talk about putting in a recreational path here throughout the county for a multi-use path for biking, walking and jogging. And we're really excited about it. And we have Cliff Miller here and Steph Ritter was here, here with us tonight and many people that I think all of you would know. On Wednesday night, we're making an informational presentation to the Planning Commission. And I'd like everybody to know that that's happening in case you'd like to come and hear more detail. It's at seven-thirty and it's simply a informational meeting and we're very much in the beginning stages of planning, getting this project on the road.
Where's it going to be held?
It will be called the courthouse on Wednesday night. Anything else to add, Cliff?
Nothing. I guess if people have questions, you have, we'll be there.
Yeah, and we'll have, we'll have, you know, a little more detailed presentation on Wednesday night, but I didn't want to give the presentation twice unless somebody has questions.
Where are they going, throughout the entire county, down Little Washington?
Yeah, so that will be part of the planning process that will be taking place over time. The vision, of course, would be to connect all of the county, to be, have access for the county, to have safe access to recreational activities like biking, walking and jogging. In my mind's eye, I envision a wonderful trail that connects Amosville to Flint Hill to Washington Despariville. Of course, that's a very ambitious project. So we would be starting with an initial segment, probably here in the Washington Despariville area. And just due to some great research that Cliff and some other members of our team have, have identified some possible routes that that might happen. But this would be, you know, likely a year-long planning process, wouldn't cost the county anything. There is no intent to have the county pay for any of the costs. There are state and federal funds available and then we would do some fundraising to offset those costs.
So what do you need from the county board supervisors at this time?
At this time, I'd just like to make you aware of the project and I'd like you to come to the presentation if you're able to do that. Any of us on the planning committee, which I can make available to you, Jen Makala, Cliff, Steph Ritter, John McCaslin, Van Carney, any of us, Ashley Cannon Sharp, we're all in, we've all been meeting, any of us would be happy to answer any questions at any time. And then, of course, this will come eventually to the supervisors, but in the meantime, we'll be working with the planning commission.
Can I add one thing? Getting, getting this vision into the comprehensive plan is an important part of the process at some point in time. And it doesn't have to be specific, but it, it would be nice if the comprehensive plans said we place a value on, on recreational paths for people to use. So that will be one of our objectives.
Thanks, Cliff. And that will be part of our presentation. And I have, I think Cliff and I both had an opportunity to talk some up with Debbie and I have talked to Gary Settle about that as well. And we'll be providing some examples. Many of the counties all around us, in fact, all of the counties all around us, many of the counties here in Virginia and throughout the country have recreational plans for their counties. The trail system can be made up of many different types of trails. So again, thinking about this initial segment that may be around the Washington Despariville area, that may be one. But we may connect other types of paths throughout the county to provide that safe and recreational access that I think a lot of us here in the county would like to have and benefit from.
Thanks, Jane.
Roger Cordany. Patty Hardy.
If you'd like to speak and haven't signed up yet, please come up and see Debbie.
Well, there are all these weighty topics tonight and I just wanted to ask about a restroom. I represent RAC Community Theater, it's one of the hats that I wear. And we have large productions, we've added productions, they sell out. And in fact, now we're rehearsing a production for Christmas with thirty cast members. And the number one question that I get as the director is, "Where's the bathroom?" And we don't have one and there are no public restrooms. We can't send them over to TULUS, it's not fair. And, you know, we're not the only tourism draw in the county and in Little Washington. I just really think we need some kind of public restrooms, not porta potties. We tried some of those last year for the Christmas show and, and nobody used them. So anyway, probably in the scheme of things, it's just a kind of a tiny thing, but I think it's important to our residents and to our, the tourists that come to see us, to be able to have a place, a public restroom. Now, if I'm, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, I may be speaking out of turn, I don't know, but I think RAC was kind of looking at, was some members of RAC meeting with you Debbie to kind of come up with some ideas?
Me and John Sullivan as well.
Okay. So, anyway, yeah, that's, I'm just looking for a restroom.
Thanks Patty. I would, I would support that and I would hope that the county would get together with the town and try to find a, find a suitable location. To me, it's a tourism issue. A lot of different events, a lot of them happen around the town. And there isn't any reason, and the courthouse for security reasons, is not allowing you to use the restrooms in the courthouse any longer. So we should, we should be able to figure that out. Every, every good town has a solution for that type of thing. So we should be able to figure it out.
I'm Lynn Sullivan and Jane, thank you. I think it's a great idea, makes you use bike paths. I think that supports the idea of tourism. To that end, I have two questions. I have one for Mr. Frazier. You have repeatedly said tonight, "Who's running, who's running the government? Who's running things?" And you've said it more than three times. My question to you, Mr. Frazier, is whether you are a, a good friend of Mr. Connick and whether or not you have, frequently have conversations that were private with Mr. Connick about the recent lawsuit. That is something that I, I'm interested in knowing about. Secondly, I'd like to talk about whether or not the Board of Supervisors has a tourism plan or is in, is, or a tourism plan, overall tourism plan is in the works. Our property taxes, we are told, are going up because of fire and rescue, nothing we have to pay for. And yet we don't, we have very, very little income coming in from tourism revenue. Yet it would be very, very easy for us to do because the county does have a website and we could be promoting artisanal cheeses, we could be promoting beef, we could be promoting our wine, we could be promoting our arts and crafts. Come to Rappahannock, we have everything. And yet we don't seem to have a plan, it's all very fragmented. And I'd like to hear from the, from the Board of Supervisors, starting with Mr. Frazier, on a tourism plan and first and foremost, whether or not you are in direct contact with Mr. Connick about this lawsuit.
Mr. Frazier, with respect to the lawsuit, just to be fair, we made a statement at the beginning that we wouldn't necessarily have to get into matters pertaining to the lawsuit, so.
Well, it's not a matter pertaining to the lawsuit, it's a matter of whether a member of the Board of Supervisors is in direct contact with Mr. Connick about things that are discussed by the Board of Supervisors, which is a direct conflict of interest.
So am I supposed to answer it or not? It's up to you, Mr. Frazier.
It's a question I'd like to answer right now.
Yeah, unfortunately, we, we have a small county here and we're going to stay that way for a while, so we have to work with people. And I am working with Mr. Connick somewhat in a abstract manner with the zoning amendments that the Planning Commission is reviewing right now and will have to go before the Board of Supervisors. So it's, it's a difficult situation to be in because I do have to work with Mr. Connick, maybe, but not much. And to say, to ask whether I'm a friend of his or not, it may be a little too much. But anyway, what I keep referring to with, with who's running the county is I simply sometimes don't have any idea who is running the county. And I, and I have been vocal about that.
You're running the county.
No, we're not. It doesn't appear that way because many times we don't know what's on the agenda. And I, and to go back to the one issue, we had taken quite a bit of time with Stephanie here on her questions, but not enough time. When issues, the way that the, the board rules are for the agenda, it has to go out one week prior to the meeting, roughly Tuesday. That's always been that way, even when we had the print versions. Now we have electronic and things are so much easier. And somehow we lapse into this problem where things were just being added the day of the meeting that we didn't even know about. And unfortunately, if we don't know about it, then you don't know about it. So that, that's some of the problems there. And I'm, I'm afraid that we didn't quite address that properly. If things come before the board at the day of the meeting, they can be added to the meeting by a voiced vote at the time as an addendum item. But if it's an action item, it takes unanimous consent for this board to act on it. So even if we hear it, we don't have to necessarily act on it. But the, the citizens, by not knowing about it, you absolutely have no involvement, that's true. So...
Second question.
Second question. The tourism management.
Tourism plan.
Tourism plan. We don't really have much more of a plan outside some of the funding that we do. We have the visitor center over there that we provide, but know that the, the visitor center is basically the meeting place for the local businesses to bring in their own, you know, to, to work on their own tourism plans. We, we don't have a tourism director anymore. We used to, the money was, we used the money for other things.
Yeah, right.
And I guess we're still relying on the people to come here that used to come here and use the website that may not be updated properly. I, I don't have an answer for that. No, I don't get involved in it because lately I've been involved a lot in trying to straighten out some of the problems that have come down the pike and I don't have enough time to work on that, too.
Tourism revenue, we pay for a lot of that.
Well, we can't worry about tourism revenue if we don't know who's going to be spending the money properly that we, we bring in. So I think we need to get, get the horse back in front of the cart, figure out who's running things, how it's supposed to be done, and then maybe we can work on that issue. Then who's going to run it?
Supervisors are supposed to run it.
We don't even run anything. We don't, we have...
That's an interesting comment.
Well, I'm just telling you the truth.
Speak for yourself.
You haven't been coming to very many of the meetings or watching them.
I've gone to quite a few meetings, working with you.
All right, yeah, we're, let's, we don't want to go point counterpoint here, I don't know. Anybody else want to comment on the tourism question? The board members? Anything else? You know, we touched on something here that I think I'd like to pick up on and that is we, we only do have a certain amount of time to dedicate to the things that are very, very important, which is fire and rescue, issues that are before us now. We're obviously debating this pretty furiously here tonight. We had the issue before us about hiring a new county attorney and we've accomplished that. We have to talk about whether the county administrator needs some help because the county administrator has a lot on her plate right now. And I think one of the criteria we looked at in hiring the county attorney and the model that we went with afforded us the opportunity to possibly look at some help for the county administrator. And I would think that tourism would be one of those things that an individual that could be assisting the county administrator could really look at because we do have distractions. We've got a lot of them that, you know, take away our time from being able to do what we were elected to do. And, you know, I refer to legal matters primarily. And that leaves a lot, that leaves a lot on the table that isn't, that isn't discussed in a, in a timely fashion like a comprehensive plan. I think that is something that's been bumping along for a long, long time. And the Planning Commission is, is starting to look at it, but a lot of this goes back to the office of the county administrator and she has got a tremendous amount on her plate right now. So I, I for one think we need a little bit more assistance in that, in that area. And I, I think if we're all here, as Phil said, the model for this county is ecotourism and we want to keep it the way it is, we want to preserve it, preserve our way of life. And we really have to embrace and we have to be more aggressive in supporting our businesses that are here, you know, whether that's through a better cell service or broadband or a better website or supporting biz rep more or bringing back a position, maybe it's, you know, it's a position that wears two or three halves, but having that position come back again so that they can work with the business, business owners here. They're doing a great job in biz rep. I mean, it's a very, very active, very active organization. But what are we doing from the top down to support them the best we can, especially when we're saying that, you know, this is, this is the kind of lifestyle we want? So I would agree that we don't, we probably aren't doing enough. We aren't doing enough to support it. We've got to figure that out. We've got to figure that out.
Well, at the same time, we're spending your money. And most of the businesses that's tourist business are privately owned enterprises. So, it's a little bit tricky to take county money and help support a private company or business. And one of the struggles, I think, with tourism is quite often it's seasonal. So, how do you convince somebody to stay open 12 months a year or have a six-month business and make it viable? You know, I'm in the tourism business and it's not all gravy. There's downtime, there's a lot of hard work, and there's issues. And even though it's wonderful to have the tourists out here, they do have some problems with that. And the money coming back to the county is, you know, not necessarily all that big. I think it's $200,000 or so from the E and B and the bills and lodging tax, maybe it's a little bit higher, maybe it's a little bit less. But $200,000 is a pretty small piece of our overall budget, so... It'd be nice to be able to find another source of revenue for the county besides the property tax, but it's not easy and apparent that something's going to come up and create that kind of income that's going to... And many of those things have their issues, you know? How many people, I can remember, I don't know, on October Day, you know, it was better to stay home. There was too much tourist traffic after on the road. It wasn't necessarily pleasurable, so...
Next question. Just to touch briefly on some comments that Mr. Lesinski made, it's the Planning Commission that's mandated to work on a comprehensive plan. And Ms. Kaiser serves as clerk to the Planning Commission, but that's, so really, her time could be freed up if we had somebody else staffed, but unfortunately, she's staffed to the Planning Commission, staffed to the VCA, she's the zoning administrator to the county attorney, I mean, county administrator, and...
And she's also our clerk, so if anybody wants to step forward to become county clerk, there's an opening for that as well.
Yeah, clerk of the Board, I guess.
Clerk of the Board, thank you.
But, Mr. Planning Commission is mandated to do the comprehensive plan. We just haven't been working on it and we do need some information. We are working on it.
Next person, Bill Deedle.
I think I have a fairly strong voice. If you can hear me, please hold your hand up and I'll use this. I've been doing battle for 36 years since coming to Rappahannock, trying to get people like you to use this. I attended school board meetings regularly and I find the same problem. People in positions of responsibility have an obligation to the public at large. I think by and large, we have been singularly fortunate in the people who have served on the Board of Supervisors in this county, including the present group. What has happened in the 36 years is that the world has come to bear upon us in ways we never anticipated. And we have organizations, structures, ways of going that are inadequate. And you've heard some of that expressed this evening. I think on the basis of my own personal experience, almost 50 years of running nonprofits and for-profits, serving on the Board of Trustees or the Board of Directors or being a paid employee, that there isn't a way possible in our time to deal with the issues we now confront and that are just around the corner without professional help. Anyone who thinks that that group of men have the time, the energy, the experience to deal with these problems in a way that is timely is daydreaming. Professional assistance costs money. Almost 15 years ago, my wife and I volunteered to pay for a half-time research person to assist the county administrator. That never happened. There was money in the budget this past year for assistance for the manager. That was taken out of the budget. You cannot, in the 21st century, expect essentially volunteers, what they're paying is a petence to run an organization that deals with problems that their parents never thought of, never dreamed of. It doesn't get us very far, in my opinion, to attack the Board of Supervisors. More to the point is to try to get us all together to recognize that we need to know more about these problems, to recognize that many of the issues that have been discussed this evening have been wrestled with by other communities across the United States. This isn't rocket science. This isn't something peculiar to Rappahannock. But do they have the time to research that, to try to find those communities that are like us in many respects, confronting the same problems? No, they do not. And it's an insult to them to ask them to do what they need professional assistance for. Knowledge is there, experience is there, but it takes time and effort to gather it together, to analyze it, and then they can act and offer. And they do act, but they can't act without information. They can't act without guidance. There's nothing wrong with the Board of Supervisors that some better assistance wouldn't help cure it. And we do a great disservice to our new county administrator not to provide her with the assistance that she needs to get her job done, to hold her up to public attack. Instead of recognizing the conditions under which she works, adverse conditions, is a hopeless effort. That gets us nowhere. This is a remarkable community. People back in the 1960s began the conservation of this land and the protection of agriculture. We have a great obligation to carry that on. But change is coming in some form or other and we can't avoid it. But we can channel it, we can direct it to some degree to make it fit with the kind of life we all like here. But it's going to take a community willing to pull together rather than attacking one another. Thank you.
If you don't mind, I think you can all hear me from here. I have a question and I put it to the audience. It's Fire Prevention Week, blah, blah. Go to your fire departments, go to your rescue squads. You need to go, not them, you. And you need to say to them, what do I need? How many people do you have? How are you doing financially? Because you are the ones that are going to call them. You are the ones that are going to get caught up in rescue calls at our age and we have older people in the community than younger people. So, you need to go. You need to talk to your fire departments. You need to go there and say, how are you doing? How many people do you have? Do you have enough young people? These are the questions that need to be asked because we hear all this tonight and this is the group that's going to have to pick up the pieces of everything that was discussed tonight. You want to have a hiking trail. Sally fell down and broke her ankle. The bears chasing her. Who are they going to call? 911. Now, I'm being serious, but now, I'm going to mention something else that's going to piss everybody off in the room. We've got to have communication for emergency services and if we have to put up a cell tower that looks like a Christmas tree, a rock, anything, you need to bite the bullet, stop playing the game because we've heard this for 12 years. It can't happen because it's going to make the county look ugly. Well, how much of the county is going to look ugly if the communications don't work and somebody calls up on the phone and they don't? They don't come. Response times in this county are far and few. They're not that, it takes, what, a good 15 minutes? And if you're in somebody else's second duty, you're talking 20? And it takes...
We've got a policy where we should be given 20 minutes, 25 at the most.
Right.
And we've been making that fairly well.
Right. And then it's another hour, two hours before you get back from the hospital. Agree?
Agree.
Okay. So, who's going to be Plan B while they're gone? This is something that needs to be worried about, focused on either recruiting volunteers or biting the bullet and get paid people. There are companies in this county that are struggling to survive. And there's some that still have it pretty good, but the majority of their membership is my age or a little bit younger, where dying breed like the guy on the couch. You people have got to go ask questions to the people in your community about if it's good, bad, what do they need? Go look. Don't ride by there and just see it. You don't even know if the tires are on the doggone thing or the door shut. People ride by every day and they don't think, oh, yeah, it's there. But it's not the same thing as having your garbage picked up. So, if your garbage isn't picked up, you miss it. Or if the landfill's closed, you miss it. But suppose that one time in 10 years, you need it. That one. I know you go to parades and all that stuff, but they need physical help, either paid or volunteer. And you've got to find a place for one cell tower. I know you want it to be like the 1920s and the Waltons and everything else, but you've got to have fire and EMS up to the 20th century as far as communications and people. The rest of it, you can have whatever way you want, but one cell tower isn't going to kill you. We're not talking about radioactive material, we're not talking about this. We're talking about one cell tower in the middle of the county to make it 90, to make it 100% coverage rather than 65 or 90% for the sheriff's department and us, or them, not me, them. They need the help. Or maybe some of you ought to get a police car after midnight and ride around and when there's a violence call, the guy's out there by himself. Uh-oh.
I have an answer to summarize.
Yeah.
Wrap it up, please.
I'm just saying, you have to go talk to the people in your community. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Hold on, wait, hold my purse. David Connick.
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. I want to associate myself with the remarks of Bill Deedle and with Phil Irwin. And I want to say a few things about planning and zoning. As Phil said, your predecessors on this Board worked long and hard and I had the privilege to work with many of them and to work with you and to work with the present Planning Commission. What Bill said about we all need to work together and pull together, he's right. And I don't have to and I don't get paid for it, but I have, since I got put back on the Board of Zoning Appeals, I have attended not only all their meetings, except I think I missed one due to personal reasons, but I've made it to every single Planning Commission meeting. And more people need to get involved. More people need to speak up as Phil just did. Phil also, I want to say, Phil has been the more Planning Commission and Board of Supervisor meetings than anybody in this room and probably more than all the people on the Board of Supervisors put together. Because ever since I came here, Phil has never missed it. I know, I always missed a couple, but I could count him on the fingers of one hand how many Planning Commission meetings and Board of Supervisor meetings he's missed. And always speaks out as he did tonight, maybe not as quite as eloquently, but he's always got something to say and he knows all the work that has gone into it. And we need more people like that. And we need people to come out and express themselves of what they want the county to be because there's a lot of people who are expressing themselves in a very different way of what they want the county to be. And it's not the kind of Rappahannock County that Phil came here to live in and it's not the kind of Rappahannock County that I came here to live in 35 or 40 years ago. It's not the kind of people that natives who have lived here, have been blessed to live here all their lives, grew up in and want to keep it that way. And there's many new people who want to see it stay that way. And so, my request, and I'm anxious to hear from you, gentlemen, of what you think can be done to encourage more people to do that and get involved in their own community to keep it from basically being turned into a very different place. Thank you very much. And thank you for having this meeting because I think this is a good step in that direction.
Those were pretty good questions. I wished you hadn't asked them here.
I think this is a good first step to getting that way because when the Planning Commission held a series of meetings in the past, the fire halls have been better attended than the courthouse. It's just, I don't know, maybe intimidation factor or something. I don't know what it is.
Stairs.
The stairs?
Stairs.
Time.
Well, even if we held them at the same time, we held, at each fire department, the same night that the Planning Commission would meet and we just had a better turnout. But he's right. I believe that the public needs to get involved because we seem to have different agendas. We have people that come here and we have people that have been here and we shouldn't be fighting over that. That's not what we should be fighting over. We should be fighting over the direction the county's going and if it's following its ordinances or not. And many times, I don't believe we have. And here recently, I've seen some good things at both the Planning Commission and VCA meetings where almost everyone has their ordinance in front of them. So, there's hope. There is hope. And I believe we need to continue doing that.
I want to say just one thing. In the future, this is a great meeting. It really does. I see a lot of people that I didn't know who resided here in the county. I've already heard from people that have come in, this is the new Rappahannock. The old Rappahannock has died. Don't let that be titled on us, please, please. Debbie's got a horrific job, I think, that a lot of stuff was done and she had no idea that she would have to take care of. But maybe in the future, Debbie, if people want to speak at these forums, tell them to give you their questions so at least these gentlemen can be somewhat prepared to know that they're not going on the cuff of their trousers around their ankles. I think that would work well. And thank you very much. You're welcome.
Thanks.
Well, change is inevitable. As most of us look around and see that the population of the county is aging, also the businesses in the county. I suspect in 1940, there were a whole lot more... I suspect in 1940, there were a whole lot more farms than there are today. There's nothing, some of this, that we have any control of. Aging, the businesses that are viable, and what businesses and/or people are coming in to live in the county, and the reasons they're coming to live in the county. Many of us talk about we don't want to see a change, many of it is, I think, the beautiful distance we have here in the county, and I hope that'll never change. But things are changing, you know? I bought a fairly large farmhouse and made it larger. I painted the right roofs blue. Some people didn't like that. Small changes, but changes. I think Bill's statement that we have to direct the change for the good of the county, but we have to realize that change is happening.
Davis, good question. You know, what can we be doing better? What can we be doing more? I would say, trust more. I think there's, we're getting in a lot of trouble here because we don't trust each other. I know that there's a lack of trust from some of you all in the job that we're doing and the job that some in county administration is doing. As Mr. Deedle eloquently said, we're all, we're all humans. We only have so much time. We don't know it all. We do the best that we possibly can. We're going to make mistakes. Conversely, we need to trust you, that when you tell us that we might be going off in the wrong direction, or when you're saying you want to keep things the way they are and preserve what we have here, we trust your, we trust your opinion. We put stock in your opinion, and, and we do. But there are going to be, it's not like there's going to be winners and losers, but nobody's going to get a full, nobody's going to walk out of here with a full basket. And I think if there's, if it's a zero-sum game where somebody feels like they have to win and somebody feels that they have to lose, in a way, we all lose. We just really need to have better confidence in each other and better trust that we're at least trying to do the best that we can, even though in many cases, we know that we could all be doing better.
I guess I have to speak now. I don't think that we sometimes sit down and realize how great Rappahannock is and how hard it is to keep it this way. But there's something that we haven't talked about tonight that's really the root of some of our problems, and maybe not all of them. It's called money. And I think we understand money. We haven't heard people talk too much about taxes tonight, so I'm beginning to think that, well, maybe our tax rate must be about right. But, there's a number called the composite index, which is the formula that the State General Assembly uses to determine how much money we get to educate our children. And ours is an extremely high number, which means it's almost max. So, we have to pay, and say, Rappahannock County, 80% of each child's education. You go over into page, you might have to pay 20%. It's exactly 180. We have tried through our General Assembly to get them to change this and change it and change it, and I know Larry knows, I don't know what the number is for this year, but it's...
7.8.
7.8.
And we, we just met with Mr. Gilbert, and we met with Mr. Gilbert about four weeks ago at his office in Warrenton. He's researched it, and at this point in time, the way the law is written in the state level, there's absolutely nothing we can do about the composite index except, accept it as it is. Yes, you want to say something?
I, I just want to make one comment. Debbie may not have this information, Debbie Nick. I don't know how many people have second homes here, how, what percentage of our tax base is based on second homes, but second home owners do not have a vote. They are also working during the week, and they're not available to come to these meetings. So, I think that we're going to have a really, a really strong opinion of what needs to be done. We need to have better analytics around our tax, our tax monies, how much is second home, how much is the people that are primary residences. I think it's a big, I think it's a very, very big factor now. And, and many of those people then now have retired and are now here and have more time to meet, but we, we don't have this set up where people who have second homes either have a right to vote or have even a right to comment on the direction of this county, yet they're paying a large percentage of the property taxes.
That, that seems to be their choice, then.
Well, it seems to be the reality. I mean, without, without those, without the tax money, we would be in very big trouble.
Second point I'd like to make is tourism. It's very hard to define what we can do to increase tourists in the county. When I was a kid growing up here, everybody came out of DC in the fall to go to the Shenandoah National Park. They had all these sands on the side of the road for apples, apple cider and so forth. And they were very prosperous, and it was a large, large community that used to come out here. And when they built 66, all of that changed. At one time, you could sit in Angusville Avenue to wait for the light in Warrenton, and then all of a sudden, the traffic went 66 because it was closer, shorter, quicker to the park.
That's a reason.
Well, that might be one of them. But how do you, how do you adapt for tourism? We're certainly holding ideas, and, and we still, you know, we had someone that was in charge of it and did a very good job, but it's still something that's hard to gauge when you don't see a real value in front of you. That's the only point I ever made.
Larry, did you have something?
Well, yeah, well, I could, my Lions Club hat on for a second if I could, just, you know, you'd ask the question about, about funding for fire departments and so forth. It's getting into the giving season, so the Lions Club's website, all you have to do is go to the website and click Shop Like a Lion. And then every dollar you spend in Amazon, we get 4 cents. Every, every dollar we get back from Amazon goes directly to the fire department, and that's through the Lions Club. We've given out over $3,000 in the last year. Fire departments have gotten, I think we just gave out $400 to all seven companies about two months ago. So, if everybody did that, and we got 4 cents on the dollar that Amazon collects from you people, we can give out a lot more money from a Lions Club perspective.
But it doesn't cost you any more...
It costs you no, nothing.
I thank you for the money, but the critical thing is bodies.
That's true, and we just did a community event in Sperryville about six weeks ago, and we got seven new volunteers. So...
About 10 or 15 minutes over, Paige, did you have one last thing that you wanted?
Yeah, I just wanted to, wanted to second Bill's comment about needing professional support.
Yes.
All right? And I, then I wanted to say, kind of anting what Bill says, I've offered that support time and time and time and time again. I got more program management certification tickets than anyone in this room, all right? And you won't use it, period.
Thank you.
What did you all think? Was this productive? Thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Thank you.